And, uh, as for approval of the agenda? Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. Uh, we'll, uh, stand to leave the pledge. Rudy, everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we can stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mason. Rudy is one of our SROs at the high school and a veteran, and honored to have him leave the pledge tonight. Uh, blessed for approval of consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Alright, good job, everyone. Uh, we're moving along, student advisory report.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mary Humphrey, and I'll be starting off our student advisory report. So, first of all, student advisory has six applications to submit to the school board boards. Congratulations to the Pioneer Battalion JROTC Raider team. On November 30th through 5th, the Pioneer Battalion JROTC Raider team competed at the U.S. Army JROTC Raider Nationals in Georgia. Their efforts earned them a fifth place trophy on the Rope Bridge Event. This means that they are fifth place champions in the nation. Their overall ranking from the entire event is 13th in the nation. Congratulations to Will Cantrell, Ethan Smith, and Brooks Hilton from the WCHS baseball team. These players signed with colleges yesterday at WCHS. Congratulations to the WCHS football cheerleaders. They earned first place in the small varsity division and third place in the game day competition. Congratulations to the wrestling team on their successful home match Tuesday evening. And in sports news from Todd Willmore, we have a silent night basketball game tomorrow night on Friday, so please wear your favorite ugly Christmas sweater and come ready to sing. Also, Warren County High School received the Divisional AF Bridges Award given by TSSAA for recognition of the ideals of ethics and integrity in the teaching and promotion of citizenship and sportsmanship. As a divisional finalist, Warren County High School was presented a Just Do What's Right recognition banner which will be displayed in the Charlie Dalton Gymnasium, as well as a $1,000 check from TSSAA for our athletic program. This is the second time Warren County High School has received this award, the first coming in the 2001-2002 school year. Also, the annual band Christmas concert will be held at the Park Theater on Monday, December 10th at 6:00 PM. And in school news from Jolie Lance with Warren County Enterprise, students involved with the Warren County Enterprise class at WCHS have been busy making Christmas items to sell during lunch. These are some of them, we have them with us. Mrs. Lance has provided a sampling of these items. Student advisory is requesting that these items be placed in the main lobby for the central office staff to review and purchase. The WC Enterprise classes are also taking orders for the following items on the report: a bluebird house, which is $10, and a bee catcher for $6. And from Amy Ware and Pam Youngblood with student council, the WCHS Christmas dance will be held this Saturday, December 8th, at WCHS from 7:30 to 10:30. And from Sherry Burnett with the senior class, the WCHS senior class is currently selling the following items to raise money for Project Graduation. There are Sonic cards and Village Car Wash tickets. And from Carrie Burnett with the WCHS Fuel Program, Tiger Lily Boutique sponsored a fundraiser to benefit the fuel program on November 11th, which raised approximately $2,000 for the fuel program. And from Kinet Dixon with Choir, The Sounds of the Season was held Monday, December 3rd at WCHS. 320 choir members performed in the show. Also, 50 WCHS choir members will be performing for the fourth year running in Disney's Candlelight Processional. And from Suzanne Prater with the Culinary Arts in Pioneer Pantry, the Culinary Arts class intends to attend their annual Christmas open house in the Pioneer Pantry Friday, December 14th, 2018, between 11:00 AM and 1:15 PM. There will be approximately 30 to 40 recipes, both sweet and savory, prepared by the Culinary Arts 2, 3, and 4 students. The cost is $8. From McQuita Maxwell and CNA, CNA class, the CNA students are working to make Christmas very merry and bright for all residents at Rain Tree Nursing Home. Each student will purchase items for seven residents. From Tia Medley, Ms. Medley has collected and provided girls the opportunity to borrow dresses, shoes, and accessories for the upcoming Christmas dance this Saturday. Thank you, Ms. Medley. From JW Holt and the Pioneer Anglers, the Pioneer Anglers will be fishing this weekend at the Brandon Card Open on North Lake. Both college and high school anglers will be competing in this tournament. This is also the last state tournament for the fall. In the points race, Matthew and Asa are sixth, Lane Lassiter and Jamison Hale are not, and we have three other teams in the top 50. The total number of state teams is 228. From McQuita Maxwell with Hosa and CNA, Hosa news, five Warren County High School seniors wrote an essay and were selected to be a part of the TDOL slash Vanderbilt-Hosa Symposium at Vanderbilt University Medical School. These students got to undertake and summon the same training as new physicians. From Lori Mayfield and the Excel Club, the Excel Club members assisted the Evening Exchange Club with their Christmas party at the Center Center. Excel Club also will help the Moon Exchange Club with the Christmas party for underprivileged children this coming Saturday. From Susan Prater and FCCLA, FCCLA sponsored a child and family for the kids of the community. A child's Christmas list, along with a field stocking for the student, was bought by some of the members and advisors. They also purchased items to fill a laundry basket for the family. From Jamie Brennan and FBLA, FBLA is once again asking everybody to save can tabs to benefit the Ronald McDonald House. Members will be presenting the tabs at the State Leadership Conference in March. We're asking permission to leave a tab collection bin at the central office to promote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been very busy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you know on the Project Graduation, in years past, they were collecting spent ink cartridges, printer ink cartridges, and laser cartridges? Are we doing that now?
They still collect those.
I'm sorry?
They still collect those.
Yes.
They still collect, yes.
Oh, okay. I've been stockpiling, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you a truckload of them.
Thank you.
I'm sure they'll appreciate it.
We'll get you, we'll get them when they need to go.
Okay, great. And hopefully everybody else in Warren County who knows buying those grossly overpriced ink cartridges will turn the, turn the ink cartridges over and make them be recycled. Well, good.
We've got a box here in the copy room just for that.
Good. Very good.
Always appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Alright, move on to our recognitions. Alright. Patricia, she was the one.
Recognize one of two, so.
This is Sherry. Sherry Redling, she's the cafeteria manager at Morrison Elementary. And, um, I nominated her for the Met in November. And Sherry assures the students, staff, and visitors to Morrison Elementary School have a hot, delicious meal, not just once, but twice every day. When students arrive late to school and miss breakfast, Sherry and her staff will help make sure that child is fed. No matter the issue students may face in getting food, Sherry's going to do her best to make sure students' food needs are met. Occasionally, unexpected circumstances arise, and Sherry leads her, Sherry leads her staff to meet these challenges with a smile on her face and goes above and beyond to meet everyone's needs. Food is personal, and I recognize the challenges that Sherry, as a cafeteria manager, regularly faces in dealing with so many preferences. I appreciate her positive attitude and the leadership she provides in the Morrison School Cafeteria.
Congratulations.
And, um, this is the Morrison SRO, Jason Richardson, and Nicole Magus is from Irving College, she's a school nurse out there. And, um, Jason was in our August CPR class at Morrison and actually had to use his knowledge at his home and saved a life. So, Nicole submitted that to American Heart Association.
American Heart Association does a Hero Heart Saver Award, so when you go online to their website, you can put in all the particulars and nominate somebody who's had to use CPR in the public, not somebody who's necessarily a healthcare worker, but somebody who's been trained to do CPR, which is something that we do and offer to our, especially safety team in the school, and we recertify them every couple of years. And our SROs, we do them too, because they're obviously part of our safety team. So, um, yeah, Jason did his update this year with Patricia, and I heard through the grapevine about his heroic efforts. So, thanks to Jason, who actually was brought, the guy was, you lost him like twice or three times and had to bring him back with CPR before the ambulance actually ever got there. So, um, I'm proud, as a school nurse, to be able to teach these people CPR and recertify them every year, and I'm proud of Jason for using the skills that we taught him in order to save a life, because that's literally what he did.
Absolutely.
So, we have got just a little plaque for Jason that we wanted to, that American Heart Association actually gave to me, so we framed it and we wanted to give that to Jason, recognize him for his efforts as a SRO, as a member of society, as a CPR-trained individual, and how important that is.
Great job. Good job. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
You want to do this one, or you want me to do this one?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Why don't you, why don't you come up and I'll stand by you? How's that?
You don't read what you're on, or you want me to read? Okay. Alright.
Uh, this is Caesar Lopez, and he would, he nominated Dwayne Farnum for Employee of the Month. So, I'd like to read what Caesar wrote. He said, "I would like to recommend Mr. Dwayne Farnum as the Employee of the Month. He is the best teacher anybody could ask for. He knows so much about everything, and he's laid back when he wants to, when he wants to be, and strict when he has to be. He's one of the only teachers the band kids can go to. He's the reason we are one of the best bands out there. He gives us the determination, the integrity, and gives us a reason to want to perform. He's the best person you'll ever meet." Caesar Lopez. That's a pretty good, pretty good testament. Very good testament. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for nominating him.
Yeah.
Made a good choice. Made a good choice. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. She'll get your picture up there. Caesar getting an A's.
Matt, you want to do this one?
I nominated Larry Kirby. I would like to nominate Mr. Larry Kirby for Maintenance at Devo at Elementary School for consideration as a classified employee of the month. Mr. Kirby is one small part of why Devo has been able to be rated a level five school for two years in a row. Maintenance isn't always thought of at a school, but our maintenance department helps to make everyone's day a little bit easier. Mr. Kirby works tirelessly to make sure the school is ready for children, clean, tidy, as well as making sure things are operating correctly. If asked for help, he's always willing and happy to do so. Even despite his current treatment, he is still at work with a friendly smile on his face when he can be to support Devo. He's also donated to the school's PTO for his annual pumpkin festival sale.
The other flight, if you can give a hell, I'm not gonna hurt you. Good job. Good job. Yeah, Lacy will get your picture up there. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Larry Kirby's quite the handyman repairing school.
Well, every time I've been there, it's been, it's been A1 condition physically. You know, visitors notice that.
Yeah, yeah, there he is.
We'll probably just step out, so we'll entertain the TV audience.
Oh, oh, sorry. No Christmas carols.
Are we ready for operations?
Operations report is next on the agenda.
Next on the agenda, okay. How, as a guest this evening, Mr. Clark over here, and he has worked with us on a couple of things. I think the board might remember, approved a 9/11 webinar that he had arranged for our students to, to use in class, and he's a member of Centertown Fire Department, also a paramedic, I believe.
I'm actually on duty right now, I apologize.
Well, we hope, we hope you don't have to spring into action, but, but we appreciate you being here. But, in your packet, you saw a Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation brochure, I think, in your packet. And, you want to just speak a little bit about the foundation, then we'll kind of get into it?
Sure. First off, thanks for having me, especially on such short notice. The Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation is named after firefighter Stephen Siller. On September 11th, he was assigned to New York City Fire Department Squad 1 in Brooklyn. He actually got off duty that morning, left, and when he heard about, obviously, what had happened, he went back to his firehouse. His company had already been assigned to go, and they had left. So, when he got there, he gathered up his gear, got in his car, and drove as far as he could, and he went to, as far as he could make it, was the Brooklyn end of the Battery Tunnel, which connects Brooklyn to Lower Manhattan. And the tunnel was shut down at that point, they're only allowing emergency vehicles through, and obviously, it was, it was backlog. So, what he did was he took his gear, and to give you an example of that, when I put my gear on, I'm about 60, 65 pounds heavier than I stand here right now. Debbie Rusev was in the Military Hill Vouch for that as well. He took all of that, so roughly about 60 pounds, thereabouts, depending on what he carried, and he ran on foot to the World Trade Center. Found the rest of his company, they all went up, and they were all killed that morning. So, this foundation was established by his family in his honor, and they do a lot of wonderful things specifically for the military, fire departments, EMS, and law enforcement personnel. To give you an example of one of the things they've done recently, two years ago, the Dallas shootout where the five officers were killed, this foundation paid off all of their mortgages. They just announced yesterday, as a matter of fact, there was a deputy US marshal that was killed in the line of duty as well. This foundation is taking care of their family and paying off their mortgages as well. The, roughly 93 to 94% of the money that is raised for this foundation, all goes directly to the mission. Their executive board is non-compensated, and most of it consists of his family. Some of the other people that are involved in it are Mayor Rudy Giuliani, for example, is on the board. And my wife and I went and did their, in September, we went and did their flagship run, which is in New York City. It's the one that actually retraces firefighter Siller's footsteps. And one of the things that's so unique about this is it really appeals to fire, EMS, law enforcement, military, and a lot of people would actually do it in their uniforms and their gear. So, they group all of us together, and I obviously registered as fire service, and in my career, I'll give you an example, there was a guy assigned to North Carolina State Trooper that ran in his full uniform and actually went down there. They don't have a Tennessee event, so I was so inspired after doing all this, I started talking to my wife, I said, "You know, we really need to do this, this is a great foundation." As I told Mr. Cox, I'm typically skeptical of national foundations, because a lot of the money tends to go elsewhere, and God willing, it will never be spent in this county. I hope they never are called upon to, to do anything for any of our folks. But, just in case, this is something that I definitely feel is worth our support, and so I'm very grateful for you hearing this request and for Mr. Cox being able to work with us.
And what Mr. Clark had talked, asked of us, was they wanted to use the campus of Hickory Creek and the high school to do the running in. So, you know, he's not asking for any funding from the board, he's just asking for a request to use the campus. And I talked with Mr. Walker and talked with Mr. Mansfield, and I think we agreed in June, June 8th is the tender date we're looking at. Obviously, we're open to suggestion on that. That is what Mr. Cox, Mr. Mansfield, myself discussed. Right, so we, obviously, we won't be in school, knock on wood, unless there's a huge amount of snow that we hope we don't have. Yeah, 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 hopefully not. But, uh, Mr. Clark's been great to work with, he's a member of our community, and I have no, no problem with him using the campus at all, if the board, you know, doesn't have a problem with that. He would just organize the run, I think it would take place in the morning, probably be over with within a couple of hours.
Correct. We've discussed that. It's, the planning committee so far consists of myself, Lacey Jones is a nurse practitioner, my wife, Becky Clark, she works for Dr. Peterson, Colonel Thomas Vaughn, I'm sure most of you know the Colonel, and Martin with the Sheriff's Office, that's the five of us that are so far in the planning committee that put this together. So, this is the date that we decided is probably best, after discussing Mr. Cox.
We have to be liable for getting names.
No, I don't think so. I mean, you know, we would, I mean, we would look at, you know, just basic insurance if we needed it, you know, there, but they...
We have liability insurance for that, but then, we do also have that open use policy that we're using right now, too, and with that, you do get some liability protection.
Yeah, we would just need a motion, you know, for the, for Mr. Clark to use the campus on that date for the five camp.
I make the motion, Mr. Joseph Clark uses the Hickory Creek and Warren County High School campus for the June 8th run.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Just want to say appreciate Mr. Clark bringing this to our attention, and your service, and that's a pretty high-powered planning committee that you, that you mentioned. I know those people have total confidence, and I think this is a great project.
And should we amend the motion so that all members of the board run this five camp?
I don't think so.
I think that motion dies for a lack of...
Look at the time.
Okay, well, this is the original motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Mr. Clark, on a personal note, let's get in touch, I'd probably like to see if we could get him to come as a road respite.
That'd be great.
But before that June 8th date.
Okay. Mr. Cox wants to get ahold of me, I'll be glad to do that. And I hate to run off on y'all, but indeed, I am on duty, so I'm going to slide out. So, thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item, Rebecca Vance.
Madeline Adams.
Madeline Adams, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're doing tag team on visiting killers.
Okay, okay.
I'm a lucky one.
With Homework Hotline, and she's going to bring a presentation about Homework Hotline?
Yeah. Good evening, thank you for having us here. We are so excited to be part of Homework Hotline. I'm the assistant director, Rebecca is the executive director, it's the two of us that run the program, along with our dedicated board and the teachers that we hire, most of them out of Metro Nashville public schools. We brought a presentation that we usually do for the principals, and we've been traveling around to the different principal meetings of all the counties, especially in central, middle Tennessee, where it's not a two-day drive, but from Nashville, and we were, I think our board meeting coincided with the last principal's meeting for Warren County, so we were graciously accepted the invite to speak to you guys. And I have some show and tell as well, I'll give a really brief idea of what do, who knows about Homework Hotline? Is everybody aware? Okay, perfect. So, this is a little bit of numbers. What we do is present basically to all the principals and the school boards is, what has your county, what have you guys done in part of participation with Homework Hotline? And so, we are free, and that's the big tagline. We do free tutoring over the telephone and online for all K-12 students in the state of Tennessee. And what's great about that is that there are, what is, what we have found, we had a great, Rebecca had a great story with a mother yesterday, but I love all the stories. And so, what's great is that over the telephone and online, we help serve students who may not be able to afford an after-school tutor, they might not have the transportation, their parents might work a couple jobs or evening jobs, so cannot get to those off-school tutoring centers, or if they can get to it, they might not have a ride home. Students who might speak a language other than English, we have certified teachers that speak a multiple of languages, I'll have a list up in just a moment. And what's great is that last night, Rebecca had a great conversation with a parent who said, "We do telephone and online chat." And her student is on the autism spectrum, and the mother said, "We have a tutor, nothing's working, he communicates better typing than he does in person and one-on-one, so the online chat feature is going to be absolutely incredible." And she said, "This might actually be life-changing for him." We have had students that have used our online chat feature who don't have access to a telephone or live in a rural community without internet or without cellphone service, but they can use their school library computer to access the online chat. If students, we have a lot of telephone calls as well with the parents, so answering questions or fourth grade math, learning how to divide, long division, with some of the new methods, how does it work, the parents are learning alongside with the children. So, it's a great multi-generational learning tool, parents and guardians also, we have grandparents, aunts and uncles, foster parents that get on as well. And a couple really great new features that I'll explain. So, we are open Monday to Thursday, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and Rebecca is manning the phones and all of our teachers that are onsite back in Nashville. Our last day for this semester is December 12th, so next Wednesday, and then we reopen again January 7th. And additional features, what's really great, we have our online chat that I mentioned, here's a snapshot of what it might look like. We are also bilingual tutoring, so there's a list of the great languages that we have covered. And so, Arabic, Spanish, Hindi, Kurdish, Farsi, Somali, and Swahili, and of course, English. We also have our online whiteboard. This is a snapshot of what it looks like from your tablet, but it's accessible, so a data plan is also accessible on the computer. And what's great with this is the teacher in our location can be literally on the same page as the student in their location. So, working out those long division problems, working out, we have one teacher who has learned how to upload pictures to the, to the whiteboards, so they've been doing graphs and graphing, and what does that graph supposed to look like? A lot more of the complex, especially math and science problems that occur, that really helpful to have it, see it worked out. We have an image share, students can text us a photograph of what they're working on, so they literally, again, can be on the same page. So, we have a dedicated Google Voice number that all of our teachers, it pops up on their computers, so the students can literally be on the same, the teachers can literally be on the same page as a student. Sometimes the student will say, "This is what the problem says," but they forgot to mention the chart in the corner of the worksheet that is very integral to solving the problem that they're working on. So, an essay share, especially helpful in the high school, as students get into the upper levels and are working out English essays, history essays, AP, upper-level writing. If students have access to a Gmail account, they can share a Google Doc with the tutor who can, again, be on the same page, provide suggestions, ask questions, highlight different phrases, and there's a chat feature in there as well. And what's great is that all those comments can also be saved, so the student can reference those later as well, so it doesn't have to happen all at once, but they can go back and edit it. And we've had a lot of students that call us multiple times that will say, "Okay, last time, we used the online whiteboard. I've already sent you the image of my homework, what classroom should I go to?" So, it's really great to see the repeat customers that we have. We have our promotional items, so I brought a couple extras for you, and happy to leave some of these behind. We have, Rebecca and I and a good handful of volunteers have packaged 460,000 of these to send out to our partner counties, of which Warren County is one. We partner specifically, currently with a 46, soon to be 47, we're adding on Sheldon County, which is huge, and about a few more teachers for that as well. But, these promotional items have gone out to every school in the counties that we partner with. You guys might have already received the boxes of our promotional items, and Sonic is wonderful and provides flash cards, multiplication flash cards for all the third graders. the third graders. So we, what we love about the partnerships, we get to come and speak to you, but also we provide you with these materials to pass out to the students, so they're aware of what we do. And so if the boxes are lying around, we'd love if they get out to the schools. We have separated them out by schools. If you need more, we can send them out to you. So I'll, I have a couple extras, I'll leave them behind today. And prizes, we do not reward students for calling. We reward students for attempting and succeeding and working hard and asking good questions and doing a great job on their homework. So we provide prizes to our students, and that could be in the form, again, if Sonic is great, gracious and sends us coupons for free ice cream cones and Wacky Pack Kids meals. And we've got some really great organizations. I brought a handful, I can leave some behind. The Titans, because you are not, unfortunately, within the Metro Nashville School District, so we can't go in our office mail, but these can get sent with a regular stamp in an envelope. So we will send out, we'll ask students if they, their fourth time, their fifth time, if it was a really difficult concept that they mastered, we'll ask them if they want a prize. And what we do, the only information we collect from the students is, we create a code name for them. It is only for Hotline's use, and when they get a prize, we send it to their school. Because the data that we collect is what grade are you in, what school do you go to? And you'll see why. What school do you go to? What is your, what language do you speak at home if it's not English? And do you have access to internet? How did you hear about us? And so prizes like this, we send to the school directly for that student. So all we ask is their name, their first name, their teacher's name and their school. And so, great prizes for that. I'll leave a handful of these up here as a little incentive. And with that as well, these are a couple of the organizations that are really wonderful. Again, Nissan, very great supporter. I saw signs for Bridgestone, so we're going to be reaching out to them in Warren County especially. But Nissan provided these cars, and they're pens, so they're school supplies, but they also will, if it works, it'll rev up and go. One of those fun cars, there's a toy, it's a thing. The Nashville Sounds Foundation has provided us pens. Again, these can't fit in an envelope, but ideas are prizes that we give out to some students. And organizations that support us. We have your numbers from last year. So this is the 2017-18 school year. We would love to see more than eight students or eight sessions call. And the good thing is, year-to-date, as of 5:22 tonight, we have had 10 Warren County students call us, or 10 Warren County sessions. So we've already surpassed last year. We'd love to see that massively grow. We are in total, for an idea, in total sessions this year, we have had, again, as of 5:22, we have had in total 5,683 tutoring sessions. So we are well on our goal of surpassing 10,000 calls for this year. Last year, we were at just over 9,600, so we're exceeding our goals. We'd love to see more, of course. And of those 10 calls from Warren County for this year, six different students, so they've called multiple times, which is really wonderful to see, and mostly sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth graders. But we are kindergarten through 12th grade. The idea that 100% of students express understanding of the concept, which means that they were able to complete their homework assignment, they were able to understand what the teacher is talking about. A post-test is not applicable for all subjects. In math, what we do is say, "Okay, we've worked a couple problems together. Can you do the next one on your own?" And that's what we kind of consider as the post-test. Not as easy to do on a history paper. Once they finish that concept, we're not going to ask them to write another paper for us to show that they approve the concept. But, so that's where that number comes in. And of those eight sessions, 128 minutes on the telephone or online with Warren County students. Here's a breakdown of the subjects, very much on par as of, in total, we do see the most number of students call for math. We have increased our number of math teachers, especially upper-level math, and we are definitely needing to add more as we get busier, but it's a great, a great problem to have. And we've seen some really great success with the teachers that we've added and the calls that we've taken. And then a breakdown of the grades from last year. Of these, these are the students that called. So the first column is the grade, and the second column is the number of times that grade of student has called. So there's your eight, eight calls. And so, and this is Homework Hotline. And of course, this is, this is kind of the nitty-gritty of it all, and what we present up to the board, the school boards, Homework Hotline is free for the students, and we want to keep it that way. And not just want to, we will keep it that way. That is what our mission says. And so, we at Hotline provide, receive donations from different grants, from foundations. We are subsidized a little bit by a great donation by Metro Nashville Public Schools. They help us pay for our teachers, so they are Metro Public, MNPS teachers, certified teachers, retired teachers as well. And we receive some really generous funds from the Maddox Foundation, which is really great in central Tennessee, middle Tennessee, my mind is going blank, but some really great foundations and grants. And so, we know that not all school districts can pay and can afford to donate to Homework Hotline to help us pay for our teachers. They are paid teachers. We do not have them volunteer, we pay them for their time. But, for example, a couple of the counties that we've, we've presented to said, "Ooh, the Rotary Club would be a great organization to talk to. The Boys and Girls Club is a great organization." Bridgestone, I saw, has an office down here, has a manufacturing plant down here, so they might be one that we can target in terms of receiving donations for Warren County students specifically. So ideas like that is what we, what we put the ask out of, how can we continue to be free for, and continue into our, well beyond our currently 28th year? And, and so what we ask of the, of the principals directly as well, is how do they know, or how do they help promote Homework Hotline? And we've started, found some great success already, as a lot of the materials that get sent out to parents are digital, and especially with report cards, some of the school districts have been able to put our website at the bottom, so need homework help, need to raise those grades, call Homework Hotline. The promotional items go out to all the students. Some school districts have added our information to their website, so just a link as a resource, the different schools as well, and any other fun creative ways to promote Homework Hotline. But that is who we are, and that is what we do, and any questions?
I guess the, the question that kind of pops out at us, you had eight student sessions last year, you had
We did.
10 so, so far this year. I'm just wondering why it's not utilized a whole lot more than it is? Is it a matter of awareness?
What we have found is, and so I'm going to use Clarksville, Montgomery County as a great example, that we had a good number of calls from them last year. We went and presented, and it really is us, Rebecca and I, getting in front of the districts, in front of the principals, just spreading that awareness and knowledge that there are people behind Homework Hotline. And we get a lot of calls that say, "Oh, you're a real person." And it's fun, because we get to dispel their idea that we're literally just a computer behind a screen or a person. So what we have found, for example, with Clarksville, Montgomery, when we went to present, we, we brought the promotional items, and since then, like every day, we've added at least six to 10 new Clarksville, Montgomery students. So it's the awareness of the schools, it's the buying with the principals, that's passing in the notes, passing in the information to the teachers, knowing that we are there to help and that we are there to answer phones. So it, a lot of it really is awareness. So we have found that, which is why Rebecca and I have made the effort to travel, we're pretty much coast to coast of the state of Tennessee to, through the edges to present to all the different counties.
So we hit, I thought we had, how did they get the awareness?
The promotional materials that are sent out, we send out to the schools, and then they send those out with the students and then home with the students. So that's, that's how we've always promoted it. There used to, used to have stickers that went into the, into the textbooks, and a lot of times, you know, those stickers ended up different places.
They ended up a lot of different places.
That's right.
That's right.
So, so we tried different things of, of that type, but yeah, it's, they've been with us, well, as long as I've been here.
Yeah.
And it, it is a lot about promotion, it's about how we get that material out, but all of that stuff that comes to us like that, that goes straight to the schools, and the schools get it out, then it's up to the, you know, them to try to promote it. But I, I think that's a great idea on the report cards. You know, I really didn't think about that. We can put that at the bottom, maybe of our report card, and put the number there. So I think that'd be a good way to reach folks. And of course, we can always link it to our, on our website and things of that type, but that, that's how we've normally promoted it.
I wonder if teachers, they could plug it.
And we have, I have a PDF, a digital version of the promotional item as well that I can send out.
Yeah, if you'll send me that, I'll make sure we get that out.
Yeah.
And we get it out on our social media too.
Yeah, that'd be great. We have, we have a, a small, a small version of it that we can do for our social media as well, so we'll make sure you guys, you get everything.
Send it to me.
Yeah.
You know, it seems like it's such a great resource.
Yes.
And so valuable, I can't imagine any other obstacle other than this promotion and awareness thing, which we're, we'll be behind you 100% on that. And I, I can think back, Mr. Bennett, many times when I was a student, I just wish I could call somebody, say, "Would you, would you help me with this math problem? I just don't understand it," or, you know, "Help me with an essay."
And a lot of times now, just truthfully, I know, I can speak from experience on this with my own children, they just contact their teacher directly. So, and that's, that's one of the good things, that we've got, you know, our teachers are fine with doing that.
And what's, and what's great about that as well is that teachers that have the time and ability to, to take those moments, and what our teachers love about working with Hotline is that they say, "I've got 30 students in one class, I've got five different classes, and to be able to spend 20 minutes with one of, one student during the school day or even after school is so precious." So what they love is that the students that call in are the ones that want to learn, that ask that question, and that they have that dedicated time. Generally, 20 minutes is about the average length of call, so it's when their teacher's not available, we're a great resource. So we've found as well that students that do have a private tutor, use us also as a backup. So their tutor or their teacher's not available, they can say, "Ooh, and that's my math tutor, but I have an English question. And that's my science tutor, but I've got a, a Spanish question, so come here and everything."
We're happy to, true.
Yes.
Any obstacles?
Do you have refrigerator magnets?
Not yet. Yeah, and so for us, things like that, the promotional items are two cents apiece, and so it does, costs add up, and we're sending out 460,000. So the computer magnet, or the fridge magnets are something that would be great, but again, where, who can help us fund that? So, those are things that we, Rebecca and I have a long list of things that we want to put out there, and again, it's just fine, because we are a small nonprofit, but have huge, huge goals.
So your sticker is still in my kitchen cabinet.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Absolutely.
And it is such a great program that we shouldn't utilize.
Hopefully a good newspaper story and good social media.
We have an excellent newspaper and a very excellent reporter.
Yeah.
It should be no problem.
There you go. We'll be glad to help you anyway. Appreciate you being here.
Absolutely, thanks for having us. And if you ever, if you need pictures of some more of the teachers, I've got a couple in here onsite, so we are people that answer phones. But if anybody needs pictures or graphics, just let us know, we'll make sure to pass them on to the right person, so.
Awesome.
Yeah. So thank you guys so much for having me.
Thank you, thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night. And I'll leave these up here for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, we've talked about social media, you know, that's something that you do regularly on our Warren County School Facebook page, because that's the sauce that everybody goes to.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
But yeah, we can promote that, you know, that way. That's how, most of the time, that's the way it's, you know, promoted beginning of the year is, is a little bit like that. So, like Carl, you want to, because while he's pulling his, making the switch there, I have a couple other things I just wanted to bring to your knowledge and attention. One thing we've been working on is the Deverell phone issue. You know, Mr. Deckman was interested in that, that has been solved.
That was losing, everything on West, that was winning, right?
Yeah, no, you won, you won on that one. So that, that issue's been solved. Verizon brought a piece of equipment in, took us a little while to get it installed, but you know, Katrina says it's working, working fine. So we'll start moving toward Irving College and the other ones next. So, so that worked out, worked out well, so that's a good thing.
Assistance made up.
That's right. It just took a little while to get there.
Well, we thank you for, for staying with it, Bobby.
Well, that's, that's what we, like I said, I wish it had gotten taken care of a little bit sooner, but
Better late than never.
Better late than never. And before Carl gets started there, we were notified yesterday, and a press release came out today on our Read to Be Ready Summer Program. Autumn works diligently with, with that. And we're happy to announce that we had four schools who received a Read to Be Ready Summer Program grant totaling $109,000. So Morrison received an $18,000 grant, West Elementary a $55,000 grant, Centertown and Deverill a $18,000 grant. So, so that's, we had two programs last year, and now we've got four this year.
And West program will also serve students from Bobby Ray and Hickory Creek as well.
So wanted to announce that.
Well, like me, I was with, saw the West program last summer. I'm very impressed of watching all those kids go through that program, those teachers work with them. And one of the things that impressed me is, is those children, every day, got, got to get a brand-new book and take a homework.
Right.
And that's more than Will's.
Absolutely.
And it will be that way in all the programs.
Yes.
We, we're real happy for the schools who apply, and Autumn leaves that work, so I just wanted to let you know that, and that's hot off the press today, so.
Autumn, you said the West will be the site for Bobby Ray and Hickory Creek.
For West Bobby Ray and Hickory Creek students.
Okay.
All right, Carl's going to talk to us a little bit about our ACT program and how we're trying to improve our ACT scores.
Go update the board, this is our third year of working with eighth graders in the district, doing some ACT practice. This is our fall results of this year that you're looking at here. I send this out to every school, so every principal, every counselor, every eighth-grade teacher and social coordinator gets these results. Every student actually gets an individual score report, and then I send a spreadsheet out with every student and their individual scores, and I color-code it, so that's where you see these colors here. The gray would mean that they were meeting the eighth-grade benchmark. And so you can see, this is a fall assessment that they did in the first nine weeks of the school year, most of it within the first few weeks of the school year. And you can look at our eighth graders, really it's based off seventh-grade knowledge, or seventh-grade standards have been covered at this point, and we already have some gray in here that means that they are meeting those eighth-grade standards at the beginning of that eighth-grade year. So this is our practice that we do in the fall. Of course, we'll do another practice in the spring after 10 ready. So as you look at those results, you can see that schools are meeting those benchmarks here in English a lot. Math is a challenge for us, with some that are moving in that direction to meet that benchmark for the fall. And then the same thing for reading, reading is such a key across the district and for the ACT, and to be there for their science results, and then the composite. I'm going to show you another chart in just a minute, that will show us how we are making some of those gains with the practice that we are doing. I color-coded for each of the students with, so we can see that we have some students already at the eighth-grade level that are meeting the remedial benchmarks, even college-ready benchmarks at the eighth-grade level when they take this. And that's key, because those remedial benchmarks, if we get students that are graduating and they can't meet those remedial benchmarks for taking classes, they're not going to get credit for it. And there's a good chance they will drop out if they're in those classes. So that's why we started this practice all the way into the eighth grade. On these two charts, you'll see, I've sent out to all the schools, the percentage of students that are meeting those eighth-grade benchmarks, so our goal is to start moving more students, where that percentage gets lower for meeting none and getting higher for these moving up. So this is the number right now that are meeting one benchmark or two, three or four. That's the percentage in the district and the percentage at each school. Also, we've given the percentages that are meeting those subject area benchmarks, so that's in the English, the math and the reading and the science. Those are the four areas on the ACT, and then this would be how we're doing right now as a district with the percentages. Also, an important factor we have this year is it's the first year that we have been able Also, an important factor we have this year is it's the first year that we have been able to offer Algebra I at every school in the district. So I pulled that data out separately. So we can see, when you look at this chart, you can see a lot of gray in this one already. So these are students that are taking an advanced class here. We need to get more students that are moving where they can take those advanced classes. You can see that we end up with a lot more gray, already meeting those eighth grade benchmarks at the beginning of the eighth grade year. Any questions on that one? Looking at just a little more data. Well, here's an comparison from last fall to this fall. Last fall, we had four hundred and forty-two students to test, we tested fifty-one more this fall. And then you can see with our percentages, you know, that Centertown up a little bit, but look at the middle school. Dramatically up from sixteen percent last fall to thirty percent that are already meeting that eighth grade benchmark. Last fall was the first year that they did that fall assessment at the middle school. The first year we did it, we got a light start, we made optional for schools to do that. So that was their first year. So schools that have already been doing that assessment had a little more time and teachers and counselors a little more familiar with that process. So now that we're getting, every school does it in the fall and every school does it in the spring. So our eighth graders are getting two practice tests. So also looking, before I change the screen some. Last fall, twenty-five percent of our students met that eighth grade benchmark, and the fall this year, thirty percent did. And that's thirty percent of four ninety-three. We tested fifty-plus, you know, students, and we've got more that are meeting the benchmark. As I share the data with, uh, the schools, um, they get that individual data so students know, uh, the questions they got correct, the questions they missed, and what the correct answer is, and they get the booklet that goes along with it, so they can do remediation and enrichment throughout the year. So looking at, also there, look at the number of students that are within one or two points of meeting that benchmark in the fall. Thirty percent of our students in the district are within one or two points of meeting that eighth grade benchmark. So those are the ones that we'll be looking in the spring to dramatically change that number for the district or the percentage score from thirty all the way up to fifty, sixty percent hopefully meeting that. But looking at from last fall to this fall, teachers are not talking with the students, the counselors are talking with the students and setting goals for them to improve. Tell them what that test means and what it means as far as post-secondary. And so that conversation is taking place, and we've got things up in the, in the schools also for parents to see, you know, what the, what our goal is. About sixteen are the, uh, eighth graders, you know, twenty-one when they get to the high school. So hopefully, conversations are taking place now in the schools, but also with parents. From last fall to this fall, you can see within the district, we tested fifty of one more students, but our percent change for English is up to, up one point one percent. A gain of three tenths there in math, holding steady in reading, three tenths in science, and overall, four tenths, uh, on big composite. So we're seeing gains, we're seeing results of our scores going up in the district. So that's this practice that we're hopefully going to build on in that ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade year. Looking at a little bit closer with, uh, these percentages. Uh, looking at last fall to this fall, thirty-seven percent were meeting that eighth grade benchmark for English, but this fall, fifty percent are. So that's a dramatic increase right there. We didn't have a big increase in math, up seven percent. But stayed steady in reading, really tested fifty of plus, uh, students in, we also made a gain in science. So as they get these results back, teach, actually counselors and teachers are looking at with, and talking to these students individually and setting goals with them to improve on the spring assessment. And the way they do that, an example right here with, with the test, I send this data to them. So in order for them to meet that eighth grade benchmark in English, for example, they've gotta get twenty-seven questions correct. So they know if that student got twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six questions, they can have a conversation and say, you're one question away from meeting that benchmark, or two questions away from doing that. And also we tell them, for those that may get that test anxiety and may struggle on the test, we also tell them a number of questions that you can miss. So for those students, if you get stuck on a question, guess and move on. The ACT test rewards speed. It's thirty-six seconds per question on the English. Sixty seconds, one minute for each question in math, the reading and the science for about fifty-seven seconds for each question. It rewards speed, so if they do not know if they can make that guess and move on. So that's where that test anxiety might come in, and they'll hate this one. I can guess, I can move on, I can miss this number and still meet the benchmark. And so that's our, our goal that we're putting in place now with eighth grade, also with ninth, tenth, and eleventh with the practice. We did the pre-ACT last year with tenth graders. This year, our eleventh graders at the high school are doing a lot of ACT, uh, practice and enrichment since it's no longer a tested area for the EOC. That's the work that's being done in the eleventh grade, the very most teachers. Any questions?
I, I think it's, it's, it's a, it's an innovation to introduce eighth graders to the ACT experience. And maybe, as you say, you talk about test anxiety, maybe this will help them ramp into it. And by the time, by the time they're in the eleventh grade, hey, this is old hat too. So they're, they're ready to do it. I, I hope that's the effect.
Well, that's, you know, it's slow moving. That's one thing about the ACT, it's slow moving. And, and, you know, that's, when we talked about that in one of the workshops, that was one of the things that, that successful school districts that were having success with that started early. And we're actually getting, you know, the, the retired ACT test, uh, you know, and, you know, for instance, now, most of our students have had at least two or three opportunities to take that. And now, you know, then ACT's coming up this Saturday, and then they'll have another one in April. And, you know, so just giving them the opportunity to take a look at it and give them, you know, opportunities to have materials to go along with that. So, you know, hopefully it'll, it'll make a, make a deal.
Very, very positive.
All right.
Good job, Carl.
Appreciate that, Paul.
Very good.
Um, next couple items, uh, one is, uh, about, let me flip over to that. Operations report. But we're applying for a grant, or looking to apply for a grant through the Volkswagen Diesel Settlement Trust. And the grant is obviously very extensive. Um, Dina has been working diligently on that. We've also talked to Durham School Services. So, uh, we'll give you, uh, given you the information, it's, it's a max seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we can apply for, but the catch is for government entities, it's a fifty-fifty match. So if we were to apply for the seven fifty, then that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand for us that we would have to come up with at a fifty-fifty match. So, you know, a bus, uh, is around a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand. You know, that's, that's what we've been kinda struggling with. We've, we've done some of the work, but, you know, when it ever, whenever it comes, you know, in past history, if it's been a hundred percent grant, you know, we've not had any trouble. If we're not willing to put any money. Uh, obviously, we'll take, we'll take whoever's money wants to give them to us. But, uh, you know, when it comes to matches, you know, we wanted to bring it to the board, get some discussion and your opinion on that. And, you know, Dina's probably got more, you know, definitely got more information about it than I do, but, you know, they're looking for uh, two thousand and six and below buses that would come off. Uh, some of the priority areas are, you know, they want you to go electric or, or propane. Uh, in talking to Durham, you know, electric in our environment is not really conducive to up hills and up mountains and things at that time. Propane, we'd have to put in a propane charging station, which is gonna cost more money to do that. So, you know, what we would be looking for right now is diesel. You know, we're not in the most depressed area, I guess. Is that what?
It's called a, a non-attainable area.
All right.
But we're, we're attainable, so that, that's it.
Speak well for us, you know, as far as making us look bad to get the grant, you know? So, I mean, you know, it could, you know, what we could do with that is cycle out some of the buses. The buses that we would cycle out, they have to be actually scrapped, you can't resell them. So the motors have to have poles board in the, in the motors where they can't be used, and the buses actually, you have to, you have to provide evidence that the buses have been chopped up and non-useable.
Cut the frames off of them.
You gotta cut the frames off of them, you know? So, you know, I don't know if it's worth, you know, I've talked to other school districts around us, and, you know, there'll be some, but, you know, my philosophy in that was, you know, if we apply for it, you know, that's good. Uh, they might give an extension, you know, or they might not have enough money, people takers to give the money. But, you know, that is an awful lot of money, you know, to put in to buses that we're, you know, already subbing out. You know, financially, I don't know if it's worth it, is what I'm saying. So, just get your feelings.
The, I mean, there are other benefits. Uh, the environmental benefit is, is a, is a really big factor. And I would be personally very pleased to see the Warren Calvin School System take their leadership role in this. You know, and I, I've had conversations with Bobby about the preference for, uh, for the CNG fueled or, or electric vehicles. And then he talked to Durham, and because of the terrain, varying terrain and long distances, that those weren't the most feasible. But Bobby, you, you came back, I think Durham told you that some of these diesel manufacturers now are, uh, claiming, claiming, uh, zero emissions.
That's what they told me when I went over there and talked to them, so.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's optimistic, but whatever we get's gonna be much more, uh, efficient and, and, uh, less harmful to the environment than what we have now. And, you know, if, um, I, it's, it's an opportunity for us.
And I mean, the truth is, that's what I want you all, I mean, you know, the, is, you know, do we wanna spend, you know, max three hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred and twenty-five thousand on, you know, knowing that if we ask for the, the, uh, max amount, that's what we're gonna be paying.
But we're not obligated to make that. We could use less if we.
I mean, if we wanted, you know.
If we applied for the seven fifty and decided that because of our budget constraints, we could do five hundred thousand, that would cut our obligation to a quarter of a million.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know. I'd have to look at that. You know, I think whatever you apply for, you're locking yourself into. I don't think if we apply for seven fifty, we could say, no, we're, we wanna, we just wanna do one fifty. We wanna do one bus.
So we'd be obligated for three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
If, if that's what we apply for. You know, and if it's, if it's a hundred and fifty, then we're at what, seventy-five?
So we need buses. Is this what's getting this conversation going?
Well, what it, what it would do is, you know, we're, we have to cycle buses out every year, and it's in our contract with Durham that they supply the bus, but there's a fee for us also in there. So we could offset that fee, but I don't know that it'd be over the five years of the contract, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you know? So that's what I'm saying, financially, if we do the max, you know, and look at the math, it might not be worth it. But if we wanna do a lower amount, maybe one or two, then, you know, we're looking at a hundred and fifty, seventy-five, a hundred and fifty thousand.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. We, we pay so much for a bus that they purchase now.
Right, it's in the contract, yeah.
So the average bus costs about?
A hundred, a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
All right. So over the five-year period, we would be looking at probably a fifty to seventy-five thousand on a year, over five years.
Probably. Yeah, about two percent a year on the contracts, yeah.
So we're looking at, in fact, fifty, fifty, that'd be, that'd be two fifty on five years. So we'd be spending less than we would if we were trying to like this seven hundred and fifty thousand on it.
Yeah.
How often do we rotate buses out?
Well, you have to, it's fifteen years.
I realize there's a.
Time frame, yeah. So we, we just, there's, I think, four buses over there now that we just are, are out of service, that we need to sell, and will only get, I think last time we got max maybe twenty-five hundred dollars. I don't know. And, uh, you know, so.
Doing that with school buses, I work a lot.
Yeah. So we need to go ahead and sell those, 'cause they're just sitting there, and, you know, we'll, we'll scrap those and sell.
So we basically need to replace four buses.
Well, we've already, we've already replaced those. You know, that's been in the contract since we've, you know, but as these two thousand and sixes get ready to go out, then, you know, we'll replace them, we'll have to replace them with new buses, and they'll be Durham buses.
Right.
So, you know, but we'll, we, in our contract, you know, we'll pay the two percent increase. Like Mr. Bennett said, we're gonna pay two percent either way. Uh, so we'd probably come out, like I said, better. That's the two percent, you know, when you look at it.
Plus the possibility that Durham, would they be interested in maybe s- maybe sharing costs with us, since they're gonna have to replace these buses anyway?
Yeah, they said if we got the grant, that they, we would look at the contract and, you know, try to work that out.
Well, I, I, I think that's a possibility, because we know we're gonna have to replace the buses.
Right.
On schedule as they age out. We know we're gonna have to do that. Durham, they know they're gonna have to do that.
Right, right.
So I think, you know, as we schedule these buses to be retired, uh, that minimizes the risk, the uncertainty in what our cost burden's gonna be. Same thing for Durham. Uh, I, I would be very much in favor of pursuing that discussion with Durham to say, look, you're, you're gonna have to pay for this, why don't you come in and join us in a partnership? Now, a, a private entity can apply for these grants also, but their participation percentage is less than it is for a public entity.
Yeah.
I mean, Durham could jump in there, but, uh, the, uh, the, the Environmental Mitigation Trust is gonna pay them a smaller percentage.
Right.
So to maximize the benefit of the VW money, about forty-five million spread all over Tennessee, you know, we would, we would need to be the entity, the, the grantee.
Right. And that's what we discussed, that's what I discussed with them. They actually, you know, when I sent it to them, they came to me and said, you would be better off if you were the entity and we would work with you on that, and they have, you know, they have, but.
Well, if they understand that principle, then certainly they understand the idea of partnering with us.
Oh, yeah, and they.
To offset our costs.
Well, that's what they said. They said they would, you know, if we got the grant, then we would sit down and look at the contract.
They won't talk to us until we see if we get the grant.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the contract's in effect, there's no change in the contract unless we get the grant.
Yeah. See, if they, if they partnered with us on that way, then it only costs us a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Versus us being at three seventy-five, telling them.
And the deadline has been.
That's number four.
Four tenths, you know?
So if, if we're, if we're interested, I, I would. I, I think we need to go ahead and we've got to.
That changes the whole ballgame.
I'm sorry?
That changes the whole ballgame. That changes with Durham being involved, so.
And they said they would work with us, so they're, they're willing to do that. My question is, do you want us to make the application? You know, or do I need to get with them and try to get them committed before we do the application?
I think, yeah.
I'd want to grant it for a later.
Well, that being the case, so you're asking for a letter of, or memorized understanding letter of commitment that they, is that, is that what? I, I think that's fine, but with this December fourteenth deadline facing us, I think it would be wise to go ahead and say, to make the motion, which I will make, that we make the application with the provision that we receive a letter of commitment from Durham.
That's fine.
For cost sharing. And that would be my motion.
Well stated.
I'll say that much.
We have a second. Here's your discussion on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? I'll contact them tomorrow and see if they're willing to go that route, and then we'll, we'll trudge on.
Well, I think money.
Yeah, I mean.
They're, they're gonna cut their costs for buses half.
Yeah, I just didn't want us to be on the hook for three hundred and twenty-five thousand. You know, that's, that's, that was my question.
Right.
You know, get to the point of.
Now, what do we do about a second?
It's elevator money. Yeah, it is elevator. That's a wind, Bill.
I've got two winds tonight, right? I'm moving up. I mean, now what are we gonna do about a second reading on that, since it involves financial commitment?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't have to have.
Don't have to do it?
No. Works for me.
It's not a policy.
It's not a policy.
Oh, you mean the policy, you mean this one, the policy on this one?
The, the motion.
Policy.
Oh, we, we, we'll, we'll have to do a policy on the.
On the idle. But we can, but the board can waive second reading on that.
Okay, great, okay. We're, we're set.
Yeah, we're set on that. Um, one last item on this before I move, uh, to a short presentation on the report card, uh, is our vaccinations. I think you have that information. Uh, Sonia Walker gave us this. We have, uh, three, we had nine hundred and thirty total flu vaccines in the system, which was about ten percent of our total population. Uh, and we had two hundred and fifty-seven, uh, staff members, uh, vaccinated. Uh, and six hundred and seventy-three students, so that's the total of nine thirty. So, uh, just wanted to give you those numbers just for your information on that. Wanted just to give a really brief presentation. I know I sent you that information out about our report card, but we have tried to, uh, make sure that each time a piece of data comes out, that we have a little presentation about that, so. And I know you might wanna get more in-depth, and we have time to get in-depth with tonight. But our report card came out, uh, yesterday, uh, publicly, I think it was yesterday or the day before. Uh, I sent you that link, uh, and the information from the director's update about that. So just quickly, we wanna go through, the new report card format this year, uh, is a, is a redesign. Uh, it's, uh, hopefully make it a little bit easier for, for families to understand. There's some information that I emailed you that had some, uh, letters that parents can use and schools can use. Uh, it's the first time schools receive a rating. There's a zero to four rating, uh, on the report card. Uh, probably next year we'll be moving into AOF grading, but, you know, there's been a big debate on that. So I think this is the kind of precursor to that. And then there's more in-depth information, uh, about students with disabilities, English language learners, uh, things of that type. So on the report card, those are the indicators. There's academic achievement, growth, chronically out of school, English language proficiency, ready graduate and graduation rate. So those are the topics that are there, that you'll see if you go to the report card. And what you have is there's a spreadsheet that I've developed that we'll talk about, uh, just briefly as a snapshot of those ratings. Uh, each school, like I said, gets a rating. The high score is a four overall. So you know, you've got value-added scores that run on a five-point scale. You've got these scores that run on a four-point scale. So you've got multiple different scales, multiple different point structures. Um, the, uh, the rating is how well the school is doing on that metric, or how much the school has improved. So it takes a lot of things into that, uh, so you can drill down when you go in there, uh, a little bit better. So what you'll see is when you pull it up, you're gonna see a map. You can click on Warren County. It'll pull up our district and all of our schools, and then you can drill down into each individual school by link. So if you wanna look at Morrison, you wanna look at Centertown, you wanna look at Urban College, you wanna look at any of our schools, you can hit that link, it'll take you to that schools page, and then you can drill down from there. Uh, so when you have time to take a look at that, uh, you can type in the school name, various ways you can get there. Then you'll see a score, uh, like this. So you'll have an academic achievement score, and this is a school page. The district, it doesn't have a zero to four scale for the district. It only has that for schools. So, and when you hit that blue bar right here where it says view details, if you wanna look at academic achievement, and you hit that bar, then it'll take you into academic achievement scores, and then you can drill down from there. Uh, and then the ready graduate and graduate information is only for high schools. Uh, that's really hard to see, but that's, that's kind of the drill down. You're gonna see a success rate, and then you're gonna see subject areas, and then you're gonna have an overall score here, uh, for both, and then an overall score at the bottom, uh, for each school. Okay, then when you click into some of those other links, it'll pull a sidebar up, and it'll show you comparisons to the state, to the district, and, and for that school, and it'll give you a little chart here, and then it'll also, uh, break it down into those who have mastered, who are on track, approaching, and below percentages. So it gives you a good amount of data, you know, for that school. Uh, and then it also has a few little icons here that, of student groups. If you wanted to look at our economically disadvantaged students and how they were performing, students with disabilities, uh, you know, you can drill down there as well for that school and that section. Uh, so, you know, just some links there. There's some privacy guidelines to protect student academic information, where SPURPA is something we all have to, to deal with. If there's missing information there, then there's not enough students. You'll see on your chart for ELL, there's some blanks there. That means they didn't have enough students to, in that area, to have data, so that's why that's blank, uh, there. And then you can look about the district and the number of teachers and administrators that we have, student enrollment, uh, just general information. So, when we get to the chart, what I tried to do here with the chart was just to give you a, you know, there's not really a one-page look. Uh, so I tried to give you the success rate over here, which takes all of the, the tested areas, so math, English language arts, social studies, science. Uh, if it's, you have algebra at the school, uh, all of that comes into one, okay, so that's the overall success rate. So for the state, their success rate is thirty-nine point one percent, and that's on-track and mastered students. So our district is thirty percent, thirty-three percent, so we're a little bit below the state on the success rate. So, you know, as we talked about, you know, our, it's achievement, we were a little bit lower, with growth, we were a little bit higher. So we'll talk about some of those here in a minute. But you can see the individual schools, you know, Bobby Ray was a little bit below the district in the state. Centertown, uh, was ten points above the state average. Diberal was above. Eastside was, uh, right on the district average, a little bit below the state. Bicker Creek above the state average. Urban College above. Morrison, right on the state average. High School, which, you know, we've had some struggles with High School with online testing, they were below. Middle School was two points, two percent below the state, above the district, and then West Elementary was at, at twenty-one percent. So Bobby Ray, West Elementary, we know share some demographics that are the same, uh, there. But actually, when you drill down and you look at West Elementary, they made tremendous growth from the previous year. So, uh, then what I did at the top was these are the, the zero to four, uh, range scores in each area. So like I said, the district, you don't have a zero to four score, so I just took the scores from each school and did an average to get that. So that's what that is. So you can see if we look at across the bar, zero to four, then we're kinda at the middle of the road, all the way across. We're, we're at about a two, and achievement, two point three, and growth, chronically out of school, we're at two point nine, two point nine ELL, uh, ready graduate, two point five, and graduation rate of three. And then you can see the various schools, you know, and High School was the lowest area, uh, that we had there in academic achievement and student growth, but they're also the only one that had online testing that didn't work. So, uh, you know, I'm not making excuses, but, you know, that's a factor.
I, I just don't know how, how, you know, with these scores, I don't know how long the board can put up to the High School, being failing with these scores about.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, something's got to change.
I agree, I agree.
I mean, they've got to maybe, uh, maybe it can come back at our, uh, January workshop, uh, some kind of plan of action to show the board what they're doing to look forward to come out of this where they're at right now. Since we're the only single high school, I mean, we're the only school, and they're supposed to be our elite school in this community, you know.
I agree, I agree. I think there's definitely room for improvement there, uh, but I.
So have we got a plan in action?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, can you bring it to the retreat?
I'd be glad to. I mean, and Carl can, you know, talk a little bit about, he's worked with him extensively, we can talk about that tonight. Uh, you know, but again, we've, I've said all along, uh, there's definitely work to do, but, you know, again, online testing, you know, the legislature acted on online testing, about no adverse effect for students and teachers, uh, on those scores. But every other high school in the state did the same thing, you know, they took the same, same test. So, you know, Carl may wanna speak to a little bit about what he's worked with, you know, the High School with.
Well, I, let, let me, let me say this, and I've shared the email with the board members, um, about my view. I mean, this, I mean, this, this hit, uh, this hit a real nerve when this came out. And I think every board member knows that if we can't get job one, which is the teaching and learning cycle, we can't get that right. We've been here for two and a half hours this evening, we've talked about a lot of important things that need to be dealt with, facilities and resource. We, we, I mean, all this time was worthwhile, but it's worth nothing if we can't, if we can't get the student achievement thing right now. Uh, you know, we're accountable to the students, and when they walk across the stage, uh, and, and got that diploma, upwards of five hundred, um, you know, we want them to go out in the world, and that diploma to mean something, whether they're going into post-secondary or, or they're going into, uh, directly in, into the workforce. But I think that there may be a rational explanation, but this looks like a crash and burn situation. And I think it's well-known, I'm not a professional educator, but I, I have read about this thing, about the, about the dip, you know, we, we could be soaring in elementary, being do, doing well in middle school, and then see this drop-off in high school. It's not just Warren County. Th- this phenomenon happens all over the place. That said, we can't use that as an excuse or a defense if some way, somehow, we're failing.
I agree.
And I, I think, and I personally, as one board member, I want to insist that, that the accountability may be made public, be transparent, everybody gets to look at this, see it, when you bring that plan of action when we talk about what in January. Uh, you know, we wanna spend some time on that, or at least I do, spend some time, ask some questions, uh, know exactly who is assigned to do what in this plan of recovery. But, uh, but this situation ca- cannot persist. It's not, it's not sustainable.
Oh, I agree.
And the other thing that happens besides the effects on our students is the effect on our ability to recruit new businesses. Because all, any new business coming to Warren County, they're not making mops and brooms. They're making high-tech products that have to compete in a world economy. And, and we're gonna have to be able to show them that we're, that our student, our student achievement is not zero point one. You know, I, that's a killer when it comes to, that's, that's an absolute killer.
I agree.
And you know, all, all the, um, businesses, all the industries, that's, this is one of the things they're gonna look at. Uh, one, one of the first things they're gonna look at. They wanna bring their families and their students here, uh, and kinda check into a hotel that's already on fire? I don't think so.
I agree, I agree.
So, I mean, I mean, I, and, and I, not, not that I or anybody on this board is mad at anybody or angry, it's just that we all feel a personal commitment to do whatever it takes to turn this around. And, um, you know, and it, it may turn around tremendously over the next year, but I think we're gonna have to have a plan in, in place.
I agree.
So that's, that's my rant. I'm sorry.
No, it's, that's, I, I think that's very justified. Carl, you wanna talk a little bit about what you've worked on, and I'm gonna pull up this?
To give you an idea of, of some things that are taking place, of course, we have an instructional coach with ELA and for math. And they're doing a lot of work, working with teachers one-on-one in classrooms. Uh, also PLC teams are, I mean, they really have, uh, scheduled it set up for the entire year. And a lot of that is taking place before school and after school. Uh, I sat on, on one of the geometry just before, uh, the Thanksgiving break. I was actually with, uh, Mr. Walker and, uh, the ELA coach today discussing things. They're doing some assessments every two weeks, and making changes in, you know, as far as how students are performing, uh, that. So a lot of that work is, is going in now and has been since the beginning of the school year. And then out of, Mr. Cox and I both have been over in, in some meetings with them about a plan of action, things they were putting in place to make, uh, changes. Also, uh, you know, this year, we're not, there's two that are not gonna be tested. You know, chemistry's not gonna be tested, and English three is tested. We feel, uh, we, we feel really good for what we have in place with, uh, ELA one and two. Uh, the US history's still tested, and the biology is still feel-good there. Math is, uh, gonna be, uh, it's a, it's a work in progress for us, uh, on that one. But the, uh, I think when I left Mr. Walker today, we were talking about, uh, looking at data. The geometry teachers, I know, uh, are fully pulling that data and looking at, uh, that. Also, instructional coaches are sending me a lot of data that they're getting from those common assessments that are taking place, and also the changes that are taking place with, once they get that done.
Just the, the things that y'all are looking or have looked at, that, the deficient areas, areas of deficiency, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Uh, have y'all identified those, and are y'all working towards correcting those areas of deficiency?
Yes, and that's where those instructional coaches with, with math and ELA, especially going up in them, and especially with, with math. I mean, math is the one area that we know that we've gotta have all our hands on it continuously to make the change. They feel really good right now, and I agree with them on what's taking place in English one and two, for example, also for US history. They've been looking at the data for years and everything there. Uh, I would think that, you know, with the online testing, you know, last year, is that I think it definitely hurt our ELA scores and also the US history, uh, scores, whatever that is. I think our students have performed better, and I know our teachers have done the job in those. So I would say those are some that, you know, definitely with the testing, you know, what, uh, may have hurt with those students not performing like they have in the past. But for this year, that's, really, they've got the pulse on everything in the building with those PLC meetings that are, that are taking place. I mean, every week, some are actually meeting even during the, the school day, but everybody is meeting either before school, after school, and during the school day, and some of those are meeting during the regular school day. It's because they're already meeting also during the week. They're just trying to make sure they're looking at everything they possibly can, where they stand right now, as far as looking toward that goal.
So would you, in, in your opinion, you would say that your, your biggest deficiency to overcome right now is the math?
I think math is our, and I think, you know, even, you know, stated by, there are some issues. We always switched between, you know, we were in algebra one, two, and geometry, went to then instru-, uh, uh, the integrated math, one, two, and three. Now we're back to doing algebra one and two and geometry there, so, uh, there has been some change there. But, uh, yes, the teachers feel better with this. That's what they asked for going back, so that's what we've, we've made that complete switch back.
That's gonna be my next question, is, is it teachers, they, they getting input on what needed to be done?
Yes, we, we made the switch last year, went back to algebra one, and then this year we were gonna do geometry, but they asked to go ahead and make it geometry and algebra two this year, so that's what we did.
Is this measurable? Can, can, how long will it take for you to measure that this is being corrected or headed in the right direction?
That's those common assessments that they're doing, really, every two weeks, they're, they're assessing and looking at that data, you know, and that's what we've asked them to do. They can't move forward, you know, if we're looking at that and students are not performing, then we've gotta go back and reteach and do some remediation.
And they, they provide that to us. I get that, he gets that as well, you know, charted out by standard, by student, color-coded, you know, so they know which students are performing, which students aren't.
That's a good point. They've got that, the data they're looking at, and that's where all teachers pulling that data, but also, uh, our instructional coaches have led some of that, uh, effort in, even in PLC meetings after school, so teachers know how to look at that data and break it down, and look at what's gonna be on the test and how our students are performing on those standards right now as far as, are they mastering those standards, but we need to go back and piece that together.
Good, that's good.
Do you think, um, class size in the math area has anything to do with our deficiency?
It could. I mean, it's, it's, it's when you put thirty or thirty-five students, and they may be struggling in math.
That's another cost to the district to bring a teacher in, but, you know, maybe that needs to be reviewed.
I, I, I agree.
Because our, because right now our instructional coaches are only part-time, for freedom, you know, where they could be. But, yes, we do have a lot of change. We get a lot of young, you know, math teachers that are coming in each year. It's a challenge across the state of getting, you know, math teachers, but, uh, the class size is a factor.
That's what I was gonna ask you too, with these, with having instructional coaches part-time, is this, is them doing it part-time, is this what's causing the overload to the classes?
Well, it would have picked it up some. There's still many classroom teaching, but it is, you know, we're pulling out. I think it's just one classroom that they're, they're pulled out from another one of that block, but it would increase the numbers that are in the others.
Can, can I ask, um, you alluded to the online testing problems, but just looking at this, it just, I can't believe that it's legitimate, that the point one, you know, 'cause you, you look at all the ones that are leading up to it. We, we look at so many things. We look at our ACT scores, it continues to go up. We look at our graduation rates, it continues to go up, and, and, uh, uh, and, you know, yeah, there's a problem maybe here, but is it, uh, you know, our, as Bill said, our building on fire kinda problem? Or is it, uh, you know, going back and questioning this number? Because it, it really doesn't seem like.
Well, you know, that's, and that's what, you know, when it looks at a, at a point one, you know, you're not looking at the percentage. You know, you're looking at, you're looking at the score that the percentage equals.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think it's somewhere, we, you know, I've given you that data as it has come out, you know. So it's twenty, I think twenty-something percent in language arts, it's around eleven percent, you know, proficient in math. Which, again.
arts, it's around eleven percent, you know, proficient in math, which again, not acceptable, and we've said that.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's just another way of, of viewing, you know, viewing that. But, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm not gonna make excuses about it. Uh, it's, you know, it is what it is, we got a plan to try to correct it, and, you know, that's, that's where we're at, where we can go. But, you know, they are the only school that online tested, and they're the only school that had to go through the issues at the state. Had, and if you're a student and you're sitting in there, and you've worked and you've tried, and, you know, you get the little spinny wheel going around and you can't submit your test, then you're frustrated.
Well, I-
And, you know, and I, I guarantee you, if you go talk to the teachers and you ask them, how many students do you think, when the legislature got involved and said, this is not gonna count for anybody, if those students gave their best effort?
Exactly.
And I guarantee you, it's common sense.
Well, I'll just make, uh, two things on that one. One, we got calls from parents asking us, why are you still testing, and the state said it's not gonna count. But also, we had students sit there for three hours wanting to test, waiting on the state to get arrived before they ever got to take a test.
Yeah.
When I first saw it, that was the first thing, Mr. Chairman, occurred to me, there's some anomaly here. Uh, this is not reflecting reality, but, but to the extent that it may reflect reality, we, we need that recovery plan. And I, and I, I wanna say, I think Tanya and James are on something here, the class size could be an issue, particularly if you've got thirty-five, even thirty, thirty students in a math class. Uh, I don't know, but here again, money's always a problem, but we need a fire brigade. And if, if it involves going back and hiring retired math teachers, good quality math teachers, I think that's something we all look at. I mean, it'd be a temporary thing, you know, the firefighters are not busy eight hours a day, every day. But if, if whatever response we need, you know, let's take a look at-
Well, if I can, if we can find the math teachers, I'll hire them.
But has this always been, has the classroom size for math always been thirty-five?
It'll be around that, that thirty, I mean, you can speak to me when you were there, but it'll be, the class size will be around that thirty.
It depends on what it is. It's, in other words, if you are, no, this is why I'm just thinking when I was there, if you've taken an upper-level class in math, then they might be twenty-five in it because of they had chose to take that more strenuous class. If you was taking algebra one, then you probably gonna have thirty-five.
Yeah.
You gotta learn algebra one before you go to the next level.
Yeah, and you have to learn it well.
That's where I feel like we're failing. We're not teaching them the first level to go to the next level.
Well, this, this is maybe philosophical.
Oh, you're, exactly.
But, but when I see this, and we're looking at thirty students at a foundational math class, I'm saying that our society, our nation, our state, and our county has not made any progress from the time I was in high school.
No.
Whoa, these many years ago, because that's, that's where we were, thirty in the class.
Yeah.
And we're still thirty in the class.
It's, it's, it's very hard for, and we have good teachers, and I'm not saying that, we have great teachers and, 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 and they have great plans, but it's hard for a teacher that's got thirty students in a class to teach with them and then try, before the classes are with, to work with them or answer questions before they ever leave there because they're an incentive factor. Because they just, as I was amazed of her ago, that when she put up that homework hotline thing, and what did you see the most cause of it? Math. So, that's, that's what concerns me, because it seems like for years, we've always had this problem with math. It's been, I wanna think, back, even back when we were supervisors, we've always had a math problem.
Yeah. Well, we were a little bit better in math than we were in ELA, and just here in the last four, you know, three to four years, that's where it's been an issue, is math.
And, and the thing to go along with that, if that teacher can't, I know, 'cause I've heard a lot from parents, when they, their kids come home and they've got math problems and they're doing their homework, they can't help them anymore.
That's the second.
And, and see, that's, that's another big problem, and that's what's concerned me about, about the fact of what she said, we may have too many students in a math class with one teacher after system of that.
And we can look at the class size numbers, I don't, you know, know exactly right off hand where we're at, you know, as far as that goes, but we can, I mean, definitely take a look at that, and anytime we've got a math teacher that's out there, you know, we go recruit them, we go to job fairs, we try to get them in, you know, we're splitting time, we're at Motlow with one right now.
Right.
I mean, we're doing everything we can to get them.
It's tough, but it's a tough, it's a tough situation.
And that's why we need public policy that says if, to, to the college freshman, if you'll commit to teach math or science or these other high-needed areas, you, you can count on government to defray your cost of education, maybe just cancel your cost of education.
Yes, it's a good thing.
Other, other advanced countries do that.
All right, we'll be discussing, we'll keep working on, uh-
Yeah, we'll be working on that.
Getting the scores up.
Yep.
We're not, we're not, we're not mad at anybody, we're all accountable, remember, one team, one goal, higher levels of learning for all. So we're, we're all in the same book, Mr. Curtis.
It doesn't make us feel any better, and I'll tell you that. And I know our high school doesn't, you know, wanted to be that way, and I know Mr. Walker, they don't want it to be that way, and, you know, we're, we're working, you know, we're trying to get it fixed, and that's what we'll keep doing.
Well, you can only go up.
Yeah, that's true. A whole, yeah.
All right. Is that it for you?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Why did they end on a high note? Uh, let's, uh, move on to, uh, our curriculum and achievement.
This is gonna be speed reading tonight. We're here, two, two hours and forty-five minutes. Uh, we have, uh, two items on first reading, the first one is, uh, policy EDDB, school bus idling reduction. Uh, we're gonna have to approve this in order to make that application for the Volkswagen, uh, Environmental Mitigation Fund. And, uh, I trust that all of you have read it, but it, it, it provides guidance and controls on how long a school bus can sit idling. And, um, that's, that's good in and of itself, so I'm gonna move, we adopt on first reading EDDB.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Okay, now, we're gonna have to do a second reading, but do we need a motion? Can the board just waive the requirement for second? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm moving that this board waive the requirement of the second reading, and that we adopt on second reading. Uh, we waive the requirement for the, for the time period that we adopt on second reading, EDDB.
All right, um, have a second.
Second.
All right, everybody understand? All right, any discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
First reading on policy JCBH, sexual misconduct. Basically, it's a very short policies that says that sexual misconduct is unacceptable, uh, in any terms, and, uh, refers to, uh, our established policy of the student discipline procedures under policy JCC. Uh, so I'm moving for adoption on first reading of JCBH.
A second.
All right, you have a motion and a second on this one. Uh, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay, and finally, uh, Mr. Chairman, on second reading, uh, two issues that we took up at the last meeting, uh, policy EBG, the drinking water testing, this is for the lead testing, and, uh, policy GBBB, background checks, I'm moving for adoption on second reading for both policies.
All right, two policies for one. Uh, you got a second on that?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right.
Yeah, that's all for Brooklyn, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, I think you set a record there, Phil.
I believe you did.
All right, uh, move on to facilities and resources.
Okay, and facilities and resource, uh, we voted to approve the ESG project for Mr. Cox to carry on with that project. Uh, we also, uh, heard from Alan for the fact that the, uh, bridge at the Warren County Middle School had, project had been completed, and we were good to know that we were gonna get a refund of thirteen hundred dollars, um, and that we, 'cause we had this, uh, certificate of completion. And then, uh, I'll move on to Bobby Ray, he talked about the, uh, the pouring of the concrete slabs, uh, that the walls had been laid out, uh, that, uh, they're starting to working with the storm drainage, that the project is twenty-eight percent completion at this time, so just a little bit of setback due to the weather. Uh, over at, uh, West, uh, he talked about, uh, the, uh, handicap, uh, situation with the parking, uh, looking at a couple of phases, uh, maybe, uh, the price-wise, if either having a couple of slots if we do not, uh, use the center section at West Elementary for parking. He also talked about, uh, that the bid for that project would go out the twenty-fourth of, of January, and, uh, that's facilities.
Yeah, we, we'll need a motion on, uh, the, uh, on the ESG.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we'll need to get that contingent upon the county commission passing, uh, passing contract, pretty contract.
I'll move for, for approval of the ESG, uh, contract, uh, subject to approval by the Warren County Commission.
All right, you have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, well done.
I'll just say, I'm here.
All right, and all for the-
That's all for services.
Well, one, one of the, and the good news is, the Ag Barn-
Yes, yes, yes.
Is going out for bid January.
Got, got plans.
Like, like, hopefully after the, after the, you know, West and Bobby, or S. Project goes out.
Okay. Uh, any other committee reports of the business? Has everyone completed your self-evaluation?
Was it maybe?
We knew.
Tonight, tonight, it will be done.
Well, it was due today, so.
Well, hey, it's, it's today till twelve.
That's right. You were-
Okay, we got that, and then, uh, hopefully next meeting, we'll have some people to come and evaluate, it was, everybody was busy, um, during this.
It's, it's easy, love.
I didn't speak with, uh, Mr. Henley, he called me, uh, from Manchester, or Cope County, and he, he had a conflict tonight, but he will, he will be here on the January, so we know for sure he'll be here.
We have one.
Is that Matt, Matt Henley?
Yeah, uh, yes, yes.
Any, any other business?
I think we do have a, we have our retreat, uh-
No, no, you go.
Uh, have our retreat on the eighth, so we'll be sending out, we've got agenda items that you all have, you know, actually put on there, and so, I think then, uh, before we get out for break, we're gonna send that out, so if there's anything you wanna put on or take off, uh, then, uh, we need to have that, 'cause we'll try to work on that before we get out for break.
I would assume high school and math is-
Well, the, the high school, it will be, is on there, uh, you know, as well, and